And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jennings, would you like to bring your students up and get started?
Sure. Mr. Collins, members of the board, thank you for giving me this next hour to share some of the great things. I try, okay? Honestly, I could speak for an hour on some of the great things that we're doing at Everton. Some of the things that we see kids doing every day to grow. But I will be brief. One of the things I put in my last newsletter were a lot of pictures. And I told parents, I am honored to have the privilege to see great learning taking place every day. And I do. There are some incredible things going on at Everton. And one of the things that I'm going to talk about tonight are how we're doing some enrichment activities with students. At the end of last year, we realigned our art, music, PE within sister schools, so to speak. And we saw this as an opportunity for enrichment. And as you can tell, I'm enriched now. One of the things that we have been doing is we've looked at kids, for example, in our PE class, who show that extra drive for athletics and sports. And Mr. Messerschmidt, our PE teacher, has been meeting on, twice a month, with those kids. Lately, it's been on basketball skills. And in art, we look for kids who are having that extra interest, that drive for an artistic ability. And our art teacher is meeting with them. Even our media assistant is getting involved. And we have started book clubs for our top readers in each grade level, in grades one through six. We're hoping to get kindergarten started in January. And in music, that's where Ms. Gross has come in. And she has begun a choir at Everton. And these are some of our fifth grade students who are members of the choir. So I will turn some things over to Ms. Gross if you would share how you went about selecting kids.
Well, okay. First of all, I don't normally sound like this, but a music teacher without her voice is a struggle. But what I did this year was choir is where I got my passion for music. I started at an elementary level, and so when I got the opportunity to start a choir, I thought, well, this will be new. So what I did was the first month of school, I just got to know the kids. I learned their singing ability. I learned their ability for music, their love for music. And then what I did was I hand-selected. I went through, sat down, I thought, okay, this person can sing. Everyone can sing. So that was hard, but then I went, this person has an extra drive for music. Or, you know, this person struggles with, you know, singing as a group. This would be a great opportunity. So then what I did was I picked about, I have about thirty-five, fourth through fifth, fourth through sixth graders in my choir this year. And then what we do is we take it a step further. So we learn songs in two parts. We learn songs that challenge you. I give them actual music to read, which is a first for what I've been learning. So what I do is I take it a step further. So the students I've picked, they have that extra drive, that extra love of music. So what I chose today, these are some of my fifth graders, not all of them, but they have prepared a little Christmas song for you today. So, girls, we're gonna let it right here. I have about twelve fifth graders. These who can make it. So just a little background on the song is two parts. The first song you know, the second song is a new song, and then we're gonna put 'em together. So, ready? Okay. Sing it. Can you hear that? Dashing through the snow, in one horse up in sleigh, Over the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride and run horse up in sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride and run horse up in sleigh, hey! Snowflakes falling all over town, slipping, sliding, everybody rushing round. There's an icy chill in the air, telling us that winter's really here. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here! Grab your sled and let it beat you, because the snow is blowing all through the day. Winter, winter surely blow our hairs away! Snowflakes falling all over town, over the fields we go. There's an icy chill in the air, telling us that winter's really here. Oh, I'm so glad that winter is here! Grab your sled and let it beat you, because the snow is blowing all through the day. Winter, winter surely blow our hairs away! Good.
Awesome.
A lot of the times, elementary students don't sing in two parts. So it is a new lesson, a new skill that they're learning. So it's something worth adding. But that's what I do with my Messerschmidt time. That's all I is.
Where are your baritones?
At the elementary level, I sing all the low points.
Well, we could get a few parents up here, maybe. Ready, Casey? But we have found that the kids are absolutely loving this. You know, kids are coming around, they're talking to their teacher, hey, it's about choir time. I need to get ready to go. Or, hey, it's my extra art time today, remember? So we're seeing the kids love this. And it's working out extremely well. And the enthusiasm for those special areas is just blossoming because they hear what these kids are saying about it. So I told you I'd be brief, and that is.
Mr. Jennings, the students.
I sang the clarim from the time I was in secondary. And one of the things that Teresa Williams is talking about, is, they gave those to games.
A number of years ago.
This is so cool. Because this doesn't require any equipment. It doesn't require any instruments. It just requires them to want to sing. So it's a freebie.
Okay. We're ready for, we need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I shall move.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirchner. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Hunt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Are there any patron comments on the agenda? No, thank you. Okay, we're ready for the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes from regular business meeting of ten-ten seventeen. The personnel report, which includes retirements, resignations, leaves of absence. We have the approval of the October 2017 claims, number four-seven-eight-seven-nine-four through number four-eight-one-nine-eight. And we have donations, a grant donation of $2,800 from the Department of Natural Resources to purchase archery supplies for Frazee Elementary and Everton Elementary. A donation of $3,876.28 from the Leonard C. Bastian Estate to be used for the Fayette County School Corporation mentoring program. And we are now ready for a motion. Does anyone have discussion?
What is the money for the mentoring program? Which, this is FCS mentoring program specifically, where's that money gonna go?
Emails have been sent to the principals regarding whether they have a mentoring program or not. And as they have needs for resources to support their mentoring program, they're supposed to let me know, and then we'll take those expenses.
Okay, so it's basically front money to get something like this started. Okay. Good job.
Just like to thank the Bastian Estate. I worked for Lynn for four years when he was mayor. I've not found a finer man in my life than Lynn Bastian. So I really appreciate the estate's donation.
Thank you. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Yarion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Seeing none opposed, we'll move on. Okay, move on to the action items, personnel report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Serkw.
Thank you. Recommendations for employment for classified staff. Angela Denzel at CHS, educational assistant. Thurman Frazier, mail route driver for the corporation. Savannah Graham, after-care caregiver for Everton. And Kami Humphries, special ed assistant at Maplewood. Also, teacher appreciation grant, local funding. On the back of that sheet, you have received a memo from me. Back in a prior board meeting, we approved the teacher grant. And additionally, we wanted to make sure that we apply that grant to all certified staff members. And so basically, this is a request for you to honor that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the personnel report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Someone like to second? Thanks, Mr. Hunt. Is there any discussion?
Mike, that was that discrepancy, if you were a classroom teacher as opposed to a certified staff in another position, the media specialist, et cetera, is that what that?
Well, it covered those people that weren't originally part of that grant so that everybody would be able to take part in that. Now, it's not part of the grant, it's additional money that we're supplying to make it equal for everyone.
Okay. Because in the original grant, there were certain people, because of their status and the thing, were left out.
Right. Based on the statute.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, sing and vote, be saying aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're ready for the approval of the teacher collective bargaining agreement for 2017-18. Mr. Serkw.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank our board committee of Chris Hunt, Leslie, and Warren, and then Scott and Jane. And James Small were part of our committee as we represented this board and met with the teachers bargaining group several times. And as I mentioned, I think in the last meeting, it was a very congenial meeting. I think we both worked hard together to accomplish some of the things that we both felt were important to this teacher agreement. On the handout that you have there, if you turn to page one, the things that we really worked through were compensation, transition to salary schedule, medical insurance, criminal history check. I've attached a copy of the salary schedule.
That was in the hand packet. That was in the board packet.
Yeah, that was in the board packet. And then the extracurricular schedule. The summary page, which is probably one of the most important things I want to talk about. And then we attached the insurance breakdown. If you turn to page two, there's a lot of verbiage on that page. Basically, what we had to do is work with our attorney to make sure that we cleaned up some of the language we had in there before. And so I'm not going to go through all of this, but that first page really takes what we had in the agreement last year and pretty much makes it acceptable with ERB. And it allows us to do what we wanted to do, basically, on the next page, page three. And that is one of the things that the teachers came to us and asked for us to consider was looking at taking our salary as it was developed by a range, a low and a high end, and putting it back to an index or a salary schedule. So this language here allows us to do that and meet the requirements of ERB as they set up going from the current system that we're on to the new salary schedule. And this is called a transition of teachers to the new salary schedule. And at some point, if you'd like to go through that, but basically what it is and what we have done is we've taken each certified teacher, and wherever their salary is currently, we tried to plug them into a salary schedule based on, even though if you turn to page five, you'll get an idea on the salary schedule, what it looks like. It doesn't say A is year one, but in our mind, that's what A is. We use the letters instead of the years of experience. Then we use bachelors and masters. If you go from a bachelor's to a master's, there's a $2,000, or $2,500 increase. If you go from A to B, that's going to be a $500 increase. What that does is it allows teachers and us to have a better understanding of where people are going to be two years from now, five years from now, twenty years from now. It's the way it used to be, and then we went to the range. We're going back to the index and the salary schedule, the way you see here. We had to plug every teacher in. It will not be the same for every teacher because we had to take their current salary and see where they fit to the closest number above where they're at. So some teachers didn't get any raise because they were at $36,000, and if they were going across, it would have been $36,000. But some teachers got three, four, a little less than $500. So it ranges.
Four eighty-three, I think is the highest.
What is it?
Four eighty-three.
Okay, four eighty-three is the highest. So it's a little different for each teacher. But after this year, it plugs us into this so we have better control and they have a better understanding of where they're at. So I personally think this was a really good thing that we did, and I think our committee felt it, and the teachers really wanted us to take a look at that. So that was one of the parts of negotiations that I thought went really well. If you go to page four, there's two issues on page four. One of them is the medical insurance, which we agreed to a maximum increase of eight percent that we were going to pay towards the teachers. If you look at the individual coverage, it will now be $7,109. Where it was, I believe, $6,582 before. Family coverage is $16,906, and it was $15,459. So there was an increase there. Probably the one thing you will hear the most criticism about is not necessarily what we've done or what we have, but the fact that our insurance went up fifteen percent. And that was more than what we expected, to be honest. We were told twelve percent, and at the last minute, the trust let us know it was fifteen percent. So, you know, we worked around that. On the back page, on the last page, you'll see the insurance, we'll go through that. The other thing is the criminal history check. Again, that's a new law that we are required, for the most part, to run criminal history checks on everyone within a five-year period. The corporation has agreed to pick up that cost every year. It is somewhere around $2,000 to $2,300, maybe, depending on how many people are one-fifth of our total staff at that point. So we put that in there, and that was a negotiated thing. If you go to page five, again, that's the index. Page six, one thing we put a priority on was looking at all extracurricular, not just athletics, but all extracurricular. They had not received a raise in about ten years, I think we said. And so we, along with the teachers' union, agreed to give a 9.5% increase, which would increase the base to $3,021, was about $2,700 or something like that. What you have in front of you there on page six and page seven are the new salaries on the different levels. There's one-to-three-year level, four-to-six, and seven or more years. So it gives you an idea what extracurricular positions are being paid as they fit into those different positions. Another thing that we did add was three new positions. They will not go into effect until next school year, but we did add assistant boys and girls soccer, and then ninth-grade volleyball. So those are three positions that, starting next fall, will be added to our current extracurricular positions. If you turn to page eight, one thing we did there is we took a look at the dual-credit classes that are taught and the supervisors that run those programs. So we increased that from $8,000 to $12,000 as the pot of money that is dispensed for those people that teach the dual credits. And then we provided two $1,000 stipends for those people that supervise it or are pretty much the coordinators of those programs. So that was well-deserved for those people. There's a lot of time that they put into that program. Page nine, I think, is one that you might be most interested in. And if we take a look at, and I guess it's hard to get your hand on the whole thing, but we actually started last year providing some incentives and some raises. So if you look at what we did last year, the beginning of this year, we're looking at about $948,000 we put into this contract, which I think is outstanding. I think we've done a good job to use the different areas that needed to be adjusted, to be adjusted. And of course, we can always do better, but, you know, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we were able to get that accomplished together. On the last page is the, so you have an idea of what the current health insurance plan is. In fact, Janie and I met with our first meeting today in the Weiss Center at four o'clock with those people that were interested in the new health insurance plan to discuss that and answer questions. There is an increase, of course, and this gives you an idea of what the single and family plan for Plan Three and Four and Five. Plan Two, which used to be on there, is no longer part of the insurance package. It's just Plan Three, Four, and Five. And to be honest, those have been renamed different things. So, any questions about that? Again, it was a great group to work with. I think our board members will attest to that. And I think everybody's pretty much very happy with the way, other than the fifteen percent increase in health insurance premium, but we really had no control over that at this point.
So a question about Plan Two and that, that was taken out of there. Is that a school decision or a trust decision?
That's a trust decision. And we had two.
Yeah, we did not have very many people on Plan Two. And I would, those that were on Plan Two, I did have some conversation with because you actually paid more in premium than you could have received in benefit. And so with the maximum out of pocket. So it was really foolish for individuals to elect Plan Two. So over time, we'd coach people off that plan.
That's why the trust board chose to eliminate those because they weren't employee-friendly.
Right.
And so, but there were still some teachers throughout the trust who still carried it, and it really was taking more money away from them, which was a primary focus on.
And I will say that the trust is trying to come up with different ways for not only our employees, but the employees that are involved in the trust, to use the trust better and more efficiently, at a less cost so that the premiums don't have to jump as high as they had. You know, that's going to be an ongoing thing for a long time. But we have to get our staff to use some of those things that are available to them.
Mike, do the new teachers pay for their own criminal background checks, or do we do that?
New teachers do pay. First-year employees always pay, then after that, we pick up the cost. We pick up the cost of volunteers and lay coaches.
It's actually by statute that they're required to pay.
Okay.
Mike, there was some discussion about having the trust giving, having such large increases. Has there been any serious thought given to looking at alternative sources for health insurance plans? Because it's just, cost of health care is a problem for school corporations. It's a problem for everyone. And I would hope it would make the market a little bit more competitive. So are we?
Yeah, we're always open to looking for better solutions to the health insurance.
Right. And I sent some info out in the Friday letter about the state plan is, I took some more time over the weekend to look at it, and it's not a very cost-effective plan. Based, we have a much better product. What we have here is a much better product than what the state planned, based on the seven districts I looked at who are in that plan. But, you know, we're definitely, that's a priority for us to look at, that it's, there's a lot to it, so.
And if you send employees into the marketplace, it's a minefield.
And you don't know how stable it is.
No, no. Because the prices, the prices change from, literally, almost from day to day in that situation.
We could experience huge penalties if we were to send employees to the marketplace who worked thirty hours or more per week. We only have five percent of our population that work thirty hours or more that we can have without incurring, potentially incurring those penalties. So that's not a good, the marketplace isn't a good option either because we could be hit really hard.
The marketplace isn't a good option, period, for a lot of people.
You know, we're not the only one. You know, we're not the only one experiencing these increases. The, the components of the Obamacare plan have driven the cost up. Things like there's no longer a lifetime cap, so someone could have $5 million in expenses where plans used to have a million or $2 million cap on an individual's expenses. You can carry your children until they're 26 years old. Well, they used to be kicked off at 21 and have to get their own insurance. Well, these were generally young, healthy individuals who were paying a premium on. So you had money coming in and no expenses going out. They're now on until they're 26. So all of the factors, including providing coverage to those who did not have coverage before, have layered onto that to result in 27% in the last two years worth of increases, not just for Fayette County schools, but across the nation.
And you're getting into some of those folks in the trust. When you look at all the people in the 11 groups that are in our trust, you have million-plus-dollar claims, and so the reserves were taking a big hit. And that's, that was a big factor. They had unexpected claims that were in the millions in some situations.
The issue, yeah, the issue that I have, I guess, with that being a trust of only 11 people is obviously, you could have two other entities have a high amount of claims, and we could have a deduction on our claims, but yet our premium's going to go up. So I mean, you, you, I think trusts, you know, are okay, but I think they're a little bit antiquated. I think there's some better solutions out there. And this isn't something you can just solve over a matter of months. I mean, this is a, this is a big deal. And it's not something you just want to jump right into. I certainly get it. But, you know, I'm glad to hear, though, that we're open to suggest, we're open to other things, you know. But it just, 27% in two years and $15,000 is, that's high. I'm a member of several other boards, and some of those boards have had zero increase, and they have several hundred employees that are comparable to the workforce we have here. And it's still in the plan. I know it's not the same. They had a 0% increase. I mean, those, what we're saying, they're just, they're out there, you know. And I'm not saying that you're discrediting that, but I think we ought to look at that because that's, that's pricey.
Okay, anything else?
On the, on the teacher negotiation on the tier, again, this, won't this give a lot more stability to particularly the young teachers to know that the next, there's light, there's light at the end of the tunnel? Because this has been one of their biggest complaints under the previous system that, you know, there's no light at the end of the tunnel at all. I might be stuck here, you know, in perpetu, perpetually. So it gives, the jargon's a little bit different, but the result is, is the same. That's great.
As Mike said, it's a win-win, the teachers and the corporation. So that's the best thing about.
And we have to be, as Scott's talked about so many times, we have to be competitive with other school corporations around. And this puts us, would apparently put us in a better comparative position to hire people and also to keep people from jumping ship.
Right.
Good job.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we're ready to, for a motion for the approval of the Teacher Collective Bargaining Agreement for 2017-18.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Beer.
One second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirshner. Okay, any further discussion or anything? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. No discussion items tonight. Public comments? Anything there? All right. Move on to the report items. Superintendent's Discussion Group reports? None? Okay. Principal Directors Reports?
I'd just like to invite the board and cabinet to Everton Math and Science tonight. It's Thursday at 6:00.
Thursday at 6:00. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Okay. Director of Human Resources Report?
I've said enough.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Serkwa. All right. Director of Finances Report?
I'll pass, thank you.
Janie, you will pass also. Okay, thank you. Assistant Superintendent's Report?
I just want to compliment the schools for their veterans programs. All of them did a very nice job, and we appreciate all that they do to honor the veterans and get the kids actively involved.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report?
I always have something to say, so I'll be brief. First, Superintendent Breakfast, Something New We're Trying. It will be here in the boardroom on December 14 at 8:30. So if you could come by. It's just such a busy time, and trying something different to try to work around some schedules for folks. Our ASBA meeting, December 1, looks like some really good topics. Student expression, use of facilities, ADA, school resource officers. So if anyone'd like to go, it's a good PD time for board members, so let Cindy know if you would. And then I also want to congratulate Morgan Ware. She was a national finalist in FFA for forage production, and a pretty outstanding, impressive young lady. So I just want to commend her. And I gave Navi her teacher as well for that. That's, that's quite an honor, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the good of the cause, would anyone else like to add anything?
I'd like to compliment the CMS Choir and their band. They were on FOT Sports Indiana in blips for the Pacers game last week. The kids had a great time. They were, those that had not been to Banker's Life were like, were impressed with it all. Actually, Boomer was, was shown on a pretty good-sized blip directing the band. And I asked, I asked Levi if he had actually put on Boomer's hat, and he said, no, Boomer just came by and just sort of took over. But it was excellent. It was, there were a lot of Connersville people there, and the, obviously, the band and choir did very, very well. And I'd like to compliment Ms. Lewis and Mr. Thompson because the kids really, really got a kick out of it. And it's just, it's such a wonderful thing when we can give opportunities for kids in our community to do, do something different. Get out and get to the big city and experience. And even though the Pacers fell apart in the fourth quarter, I don't think the kids cared. They just had such a good, they, and I will commend the teachers at CMS. They did not give those children homework on that, on that night. So the kids could be a little bit tired the next morning. I know one in particular that was. And still have enjoyment of the day. I think that's just so important, to give those kids those different kinds of opportunities. So hopefully, we can continue to do that. And just really, really proud of the kids for what they did at the Pacers game.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Scott, did you want to mention that we maybe featured on TV Sunday morning?
Oh. November 19th, Sunday, 9, I think it's 9:00, the show is CBS Sunday Morning. So they came and spent the full day with us, so we didn't realize they were spending. They were actually back the next day getting some outside video of CHS and crazy. So Lee Cowan, who's one of the national correspondents, did a story, spent the day. I commend Rachel O'Brien, our Food Service Director, Charwells. They really did an awesome job presenting our district and our food service program. So it's the food show for CBS Sunday Morning. I grew up with that on in my house with Charles Corral. That takes me back to that being a staple on Sunday mornings. But really neat opportunity to highlight, I think, in a really positive way, some of our efforts that we're doing in coordination with Charwells to really just take care of the kids in our community. And so I look forward to watching it, and I hope it's.
How did they get the idea to come here? Was it through us, or was it through Charwells? I was just real curious about that.
They picked up the story. I got a call, thought, we didn't know who it was, but from CBS. And they picked up the story on the AP from the News Examiner. So I contacted James Bragg and notified him. But Rachel O'Brien had actually worked with him on a story about food service that ran about two weeks ago. They, someone picked it up in New York, and they contacted us, so.
CBS Sunday Morning has been in Connersville before with Brianna Carce and her horse.
Oh.
So they were not totally unfamiliar with, that's been a few years ago. But that she was on that, and it was the same correspondent that was, was doing it, yeah. But that's, that's really kind of cool.
It's really, looking forward to that.
Between 9:00 and 10:30 on Sunday morning.
Mike's already DVR'd.
I watched it this Sunday, but it wasn't on.
No. DVR it this Sunday.
Just getting ready.
Be, be prepared, Mike.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Adjourn. Thank you.
I need to make sure the board.